Boom, boom, boom.
City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly spirit, bless everyone present with us tonight. Give us your guidance and your wisdom as we handle the city's business for our citizens. We ask for this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of June 16th, 2021 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now there be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion. Convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is in order. What is the pleasure of City Council? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Of a motion from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg? A second by Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Hearing none, members of City Council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the December 16th, 2020 work session and regular meeting is the next item for consideration. A motion is in order. What's the pleasure of City Council? Councilman Johnson? Council, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is any discussion of the motion? Please use your request to speak button. Seeing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of the consent agenda items and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. There are no items on the consent agenda. Therefore, a motion is in order to adopt the agenda in its entirety. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Fawcett?
To approve.
Councilman Williams? We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Members of City Council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
We have no items on the consent agenda, therefore we will move to public hearings. And our first public hearing is an ordinance amending Section 26-4, polling places in precincts of the Code of the City of Suffolk to provide a new polling place for the Holland Precinct. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, as E. Felder, interim Chief of Staff, will provide the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Manager, of the hour before you this evening is an ordinance for your consideration, amending Section 26-4 of the Code of the City of Suffolk regarding polling places in precincts, namely to provide a new polling place in the Holland Precinct located in the Holy Neck Borough. The current polling location is a Holland Community House located at 6807 Neverland Drive. It's a private location and they no longer agree to continue as a polling site. Therefore, this ordinance would allow the establishment of new polling locations in that particular precinct. The new location proposed, as you can see on the overhead, is Southwestern Elementary School, which is located at 150 Pioneer Road in the Holland Precinct less than three miles away from the current polling location. As is required prior to a public hearing, the notice of public hearing was advertised on June 3rd as well as June 9th in the Virginian Pilot, and we respectfully request approval of this ordinance. Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, following which any questions can be answered by staff or the interim city attorney as it pertains to the Code of the City of Suffolk.
Thank you, Mr. Felder. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comment.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have any speakers? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion is in order. What is the pleasure of City Council? Councilman Johnson?
May I move for approval of this ordinance?
Motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Seeing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to expand an existing funeral home on property located at 405 Johnson Avenue. Zoning map 34G24 (6-5), Parcels 1, Asterisk 2, 3, and 4, Account numbers 350658000, 350659000, and 350660000, CUP 2020-0228. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, Mr. Bob Gumas, interim Director of Planning and Community Development is at the podium to provide the staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Presented for your consideration is a request for a conditional use permit required in order to expand the existing Overton Funeral Home. The subject property is located in the Tines Park neighborhood in downtown and is at the intersection between Johnson Avenue and Spruce Street. The proposal includes a 2,300-square-foot building expansion, which will include an enlarged lobby as well as two additional new viewing rooms. It will also include garage facilities for vehicle storage. The applicant also proposes to add 18 parking spaces and associated stormwater management facilities. To accommodate this expansion, the applicant will acquire two adjacent properties, and as such, a condition for site plan approval will be the vacation of the internal property boundaries. The proposed expansion complies with the required criteria for the issuance of a conditional use permit, and the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to forward this request with a recommendation for approval. This is a public hearing at which, conclusion, staff and I are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is for proponents, those in favor of. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion is in order. What is the pleasure of council? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Vice Mayor Bennett. Councilman Williams?
Second.
A second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, please report, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish parking commercial not owned or operated by a public agency on properly located at the intersection of North Gate Commerce Parkway and Industrial Drive. Zoning map 20, Parcel 22H, Account number 306003592, CUP 2021-10. Mr. Manager, please provide the overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Gumas, interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will also provide the staff report to you on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good evening again. Presented for your consideration is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a commercial parking lot within the North Gate Commerce Center. The proposed parking lot will be an ancillary use to and in support of the 4 million square feet of distribution warehouse currently under construction. It will also provide needed additional commercial vehicle storage capacity for that facility. This facility will also help support a companion distribution warehouse project under construction down the road in the city of Chesapeake. The facility will house delivery trucks and tractor-trailers waiting to be loaded for distribution. This is not a container storage lot and will not be used as such. The proposed facility, as conditioned in the approving ordinance, complies with the requirements criteria for the issuance of a conditional use permit, and as such, Planning Commission voted seven to zero to forward this request with a recommendation for approval. Again, this is a public hearing, after which I and other staff are available to address council's questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have any speakers in favor? Do we have any speakers in opposition? Do we have any speakers in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
I move for approval.
Vice Mayor's motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett?
I second the Vice Mayor's motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? If so, please hit your request to speak button. Hearing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next and last public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Great Fork Road and Lucy Cross Road. Zoning map 64, Parcel 58B, Account number 100595000. Mr. Manager, would you please provide an overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Mr. Bob Gumas, interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council members, presented for your consideration is a request to establish a solar facility totaling 3 megawatts in generation capacity. The subject property is located within the rural agricultural use district adjacent to the Whaleyville Village. Specifically, the project, the subject property is located at the intersection between Great Fork Road and Lucy Cross Road and is zoned A agriculture. It consists of 15 acres in size, and surrounding uses include single-family residences and the Great Fork Baptist Church to the east, or, excuse me, to the west, and agricultural lands to the east. Initially, the Planning Commission tabled this request to allow the applicant additional time to meet with surrounding community members. Subsequently, and in response to that meeting, the applicant suggested to modify the specific features of the proposed conceptual design. However, and while these modifications were noted at that meeting, they were not formally submitted and available for consideration by the Planning Commission at its May 18th meeting. Consequently, noting continued opposition, the Planning Commission voted six to one to forward this request with a recommendation that it be denied. I will note that the request being considered by City Council this evening does include the proposed modifications that were not available for the Planning Commission's consideration. These include such things as no-inverter zones, as well as enhanced landscaping and buffering between the proposed facility and adjacent residents. I will also note that the request does comply with the supplemental standards for solar facilities contained in the Unified Development Ordinance. However, I also want to point out that it does demonstrate the potential need for additional evaluation criteria to be considered, as, and as such, special attention will be given to these type of facilities during the update of the comprehensive plan. This is a public hearing, after which I and other staff are available to address your questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And these are speakers that are in favor of this ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Martin Speroni. I'm an attorney working with Saunders and Ojeda at 705 West Washington Street. My client today has had the opportunity to speak with the neighboring, adjacent neighbors to the facility, and they have had a chance to modify their plan to adapt to their concerns. Their concerns fell mainly on three areas, and there was quite a people, a lot of people that were concerned. One was an environmental concern, whether the panels themselves had some environmental heavy elements and heavy metals and what have you. The second concern was sound. Was this going to be noisy in some way that was going to be upsetting to them? And finally, a question of sight. Was this going to be unsightly? We have all heard of facilities, solar facilities, that had these problems, so have these people, and they had valid concerns. My client has made a solid effort to modify everything that could be modified to allay these concerns. In some cases, they have been, and in others, you will hear in a moment that there is still some opposition. There is a fourth concern that I heard about since then, which is whether putting this facility would compete with farming, inasmuch as the part of, of what is going to be developed as a solar facility is now being farmed. And after looking into it, I am told that the site is too small to be farmed efficiently, and so it would not necessarily compete in the future with farming. My client will speak next to the details of the changes that they have made. Thank you.
Next speaker in favor. Have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Doniger. I'm Vice President of Engineering and Operations for Chaberton Energy, and I lead our Virginia office, which is located at 1523 Hugh Not Road in Midlothian. Well, now, a resident of Suffolk, I was stationed here in Norfolk for five years, have a strong affinity for the region, as I've developed several renewable energy projects here, and often based out of the Hilton Garden Inn here in Suffolk. Chaberton is a local development affiliate of Greenbacker Capital, which operates over 1,000 megawatts of solar and wind renewable energy across the United States. This project is designed in support of the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which was passed last April, migrating the state to 100% renewable energy by 2050. And with the related environmental impacts are so important at this point in our history, such as the nearly 150,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide that will be displaced, which equates to taking about 1,000 cars off the road each year. As Mr. Speroni mentioned, we began developing this project last year, and that included conducting one-on-one and communal outreach to neighbors and other stakeholders in the community to ensure that not only would this be built in a high-impact location to the power grid, but also that it would be built in a manner that's conducive to the neighborhood in which it would be situated. And as Mr. Speroni mentioned, there are several concerns that came out, and I'd like to briefly address a little bit more detail about each one of those, those three areas. With respect to environmental considerations, advances in the solar industry over the last few years have really all but eliminated any environmental considerations or concerns. We only supply, source, for instance, our solar panels from top-tier suppliers, which means that with the industry standard migrated to what, what do we refer to as a solid silica-based matrix, which means basically we're putting out there in the field materials that are essentially the same as what is in the residential window today. Perhaps the most significant concern we heard was with respect to noise. And as we dug into this issue further, we came to understand that many in Suffolk really base that, that consideration on the solar project that's on 460, which uses what the industry, we refer to as centralized inverters. If you go out there, you can easily see them from the fence line and hear them from the fence line. They're approximately eight foot tall, nearly as long as a tractor trailer, and include inverters and transformers, and most significantly, a cooling unit with a loud compressor on it. By comparison, the project that we are, are planning here uses what we call string inverters. What the industry refers to as string inverters, these are about the size of a desktop computer. And while they do have a little bit of sound coming from them, once you move about 20 feet away from them in any direction, you really don't hear anything at all. You'll just hear the ambient noise, because they do not have any of that extra ancillary equipment, such as the cooling equipment or compressors that you hear. equipment, such as the cooling equipment or compressors that you hear out on four sixty. However, to make absolutely certain, and to lay any concerns that we, that we had from, from the neighbors, particularly to the west, we've proposed the no-inverter zone that the, the staff just, just mentioned, to make sure that we'll have at least four hundred and fifty feet, which is according to our measurements where the central inverters go below the ambient noise out on four sixty. So, in summary, there should be no, there is no noise concern from outside of the property line, from any of the neighbor, neighboring properties to our project, based on, based on these, these mitigations. Regarding this concern about sight lines, we've taken measures to minimize our impact as well. For instance, all the power lines will be buried even as they go off property until north of Lucy Cross Road, until they hit the right-of-way for Dominion Power, where they, they have to go aerial to, to interconnect to the grid. But most importantly, the project does comply with the city's newest guidelines regarding landscaping, and in fact, have done a little bit more so. Specifically, as you're, if you're looking from outside the project space, looking in towards the project, the first thing you'll notice are shrubs growing low to the ground, and then you'll see flowering trees. They'll grow to about fifteen feet in height. Followed that, you'll have some shade, shade trees interspersed. They'll grow to about thirty feet in height, and behind those, now fifty feet away from the, the property line, will be a line of evergreens to provide greenery throughout the year round. Beyond the evergreens, if you were to walk through, there'll be another open space, which will vary from about fifty to a hundred fifty feet between the evergreens and then the actual project. The fence will be in that space closer to the solar panels. So if you're standing outside the landscaping, as the trees grow over time, you likely won't even see the fence, never mind the solar panels, based on the density of the landscaping that we're providing. All, in all, we're investing, planning to invest over a hundred thousand dollars in that landscaping to make sure that this fits into the neighborhood in a, in a very good and conducive way. For our most northern neighbor and the most southern neighbor, we actually have a, the, the orientation of the site allowed us to do a little bit more, so we actually have a hundred feet of trees, as opposed to just the fifty that's required. And so that's even additional, and that's included in that investment that I mentioned. Finally, it's important to note that while the current use of land is agriculture, it's about eight, eight of the acres we're using are currently in farming. The owners publicly indicated that due to the small size of that plot, it's not financially viable to continue that, that use, and solar is really the perfect solution to take over that, to, to transition to, particularly for this type of, of setting that we see here. It has no odor, no noises, as I've mentioned, as I've described, as we will implement, no emissions really of any kind, and it's environmentally friendly both on the macro or planetary sense, as well as on the local level as well. Thank you for your time this evening, and if there's any additional minutes, I'd like to invite up one of our neighbors who will also speak in support.
My name is Skylar Wood. I live at two twenty-five Great Fork Road. I would like to read an excerpt from my letter of support to Chaberton Energy. I attended the community meeting organized by Chaberton on May fifth at the Great Fork Baptist, Baptist Church. Hearing my neighbors' concerns, it seems that some people may have received bad information from the internet or from the grapevine about solar panels. I received a petition to cancel this project from a neighbor. The resident attempted to spread misinformation that would cause panic to any, any homeowner, even myself. Prior to the community, community meeting, I did my own independent research. It appears that every grievance listed in the petition was either incorrect or fueled by a manipulative, self-centered agenda. Correspondence with Chaberton has remained transparent and extremely professional. The Chaberton team's presentation made reasonable efforts to clear up any misinformation. My personal findings concur with the presentation. I appreciate Chaberton Energy for hearing the community's concerns and address them with their presentation. I appreciate, uh, sorry. The adjustment to the location of the transformer and the inverters should alleviate the neighborhood's concern about the noise. I would like to personally thank Chaberton Energy for their unwavering professionalism and commitment. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speakers. Speaking in favor, we now have fifteen minutes for opposition. Your first speaker in opposition to this ordinance.
My name is Ruth LaZon. I live at two forty-five Great Fork Road. This proposed solar farm, if approved, would be adjacent to my backyard and the backyards of my neighbors. Frankly, my main concern with the solar farm is that it's just too close to our homes. Normally, when you see these solar farms, they're in remote areas, isolated, away from houses. That's not the case with here. These solar farms are noisy and unsightly, and I appreciate the fact that they're going to do some changes with the inverters and move them back further. But as far as I'm concerned, that's at least a partial admission on their part, that yeah, there's some noise coming from these things. As far as the buffer and the, all the, the vegetation they're talking about, I've lived in my home now for four years, and the land had been cleared when the house was built. I've been four years in trying to grow trees, shrubberies, and flowers, and with only moderate success. It's going to take years for them to grow the vegetation that they're talking about that's going to hide the solar panels and, and the, and the fencing. That solar field's going to be seen. No one really knows yet the impact that these solar panels or in solar farms are going to have on the immediate areas around them. So that's another reason I believe that they should be placed in remote areas until we all find out exactly what their impact's going to be and get some experience on these things. Our homes are going to take a hit. I know that I wouldn't have moved there four years ago if that solar farm had been there behind the house. And my guess is not too many people want to walk out of their homes into their backyards and come face to face with a solar farm. So I would ask that you just please take all of this into consideration as you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Your next speaker, please. Next speaker in opposition to this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Tim Daniel. I live at thirty-eight ninety-five Adam Swamp Road. I'm here as a deacon and a spokesman for Great Fork Baptist Church. Great Fork Baptist Church is overwhelmingly against this project, mainly because of the aesthetics. We're not against solar power, we're not against any form of energy generation, but like Ms. Ruth, our beloved neighbor said, not in our backyard. This plant, this solar farm would directly impact fifteen residents of our small Great Fork community, as well as our church, which by the way, turns two hundred years old in twelve years. We can take off from the Suffolk Airport, fly for ten minutes, and I can show you dozens of fields that are better suited to something like this, that doesn't take away and devalue these people's property, as well as devalue Great Fork Baptist Church, our cemetery, and butt right up to our parsonage. We have six generations of members buried in our cemetery. We have people that have been there for, their families for almost two hundred years. I would ask you to get behind these people in their opposition and give voice to this and oppose this project and oppose it tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, in opposition.
Hello, my name is Jessica Yenney, and I live at two five five Great Fork Road. I pretty much agree with everything that has been said so far. We created, I sent you guys an email with the petition and the eighty-six signatures with their address and the date that they signed, as well as the, I sent a petition to the church, which I think they brought, but we are a military family, as well as, I would say, at least seven or eight others on our road. My husband drives an hour one way to work every single day. We could have lived anywhere at Hampton Roads, and we chose Whaleyville for a reason, mainly because of the community. When we build our home, we like the area, the lot, our view. Had we known that the, that there would have been a solar farm, we would have, we would have chose to build there. I'm all for going green, but I believe that there are certain areas for them, and I don't believe that our backyard is one of those areas. It's not a neighbor that we need or want. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please, in opposi, in opposition.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, my name is Dennis Baggett, and I live at two oh five Roundtree Crescent, three miles from this proposed solar farm. More importantly, I'm a trustee and lifetime member of Great Fork Baptist Church, and I'm here this evening representing the church. My objective in speaking to you is not to express my overall opinion on solar farms, pro or con. I attended both Planning Commission meetings, as well as the community meeting hosted by Great Fork. As you would expect, most of the conversation from the people representing the solar farm was how it would not adversely affect anything, and how great it was going to be for the city and the environment. Most of the conversation from the neighbors and the people representing the church was, we just don't want this in our backyard. The proposed location for this particular solar farm is what concerns me. This proposed solar farm is not tucked away in some out-of-the-way field. It backs up to eight homes and sits across the road from seven more homes, as well as a hundred and eighty-eight-year-old church and cemetery. One of the homes that it would back up, that the solar farm would back up to is the church parsonage. I feel that there are many areas in Virginia, or even within the city of Suffolk, that could be found where you wouldn't have this many residents and a church affected, one of the oldest churches in the city and still very active. One question I asked you as citizens of Suffolk and council members, would you want a solar farm in your backyard or in front of your church? I hope that you, as council members and leaders of our city, look into the future and decide if the beautiful, beautiful agricultural landscape the city currently enjoys should be turned into a city of solar farms built on top of homes and a historic church. Please consider how this proposed solar farm would adversely affect Great Fork Baptist Church and the surrounding homeowners with your vote. I do have a petition with me, signed by thirty-three members of Great Fork Baptist Church, urging you to deny this proposed solar farm. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kelly Hengler, I'm at nine three four five Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. So I was at the Planning Commission, and they did such a wonderful job. I have such high compliments for our Planning Commission, and it actually turned into two times that these folks had to come out to Plan and Commission, and the request was so that they could actually have time to be able to meet with the participants. I have very dear friends who live out in the Whaleyville area who cannot make it here. We have horrible traffic coming in, we had an overturned truck as well down on King's Highway, as well as out Nansman Parkway. So there were other people trying to get here today, and I said I would make it here and I would speak. And basically, I am hearing what the church members are saying. I have friends who go to that church as well, and there wasn't a recommendation for this, primarily because of the thrust of people coming forward. So I will say this, we love Suffolk, and we love everybody coming here and involving it and continuing to evolve it, but up against homes is a no. One of the asks, so that people could have a voice, included the petition, so they could get the church together to be able to have their own petition within the church as well. So I will say, to what I heard as I was on the way here, stuck in traffic, welcome to Suffolk, but please don't minimize other people's voices and say they're wrong and things are misled. I'm not talking to the council right now, okay? That is not how you enter Suffolk. We are a community, and so everyone can bring forth any way that they can and whatever they have to say. And for this word, I say that my friends and dear ones who live out in Whaleyville have asked to say, please, no, not up against residences. We have a beautiful, beautiful area, it's going to keep growing and be more and more impacted in different ways, and I think we can plan better. Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker in opposition. Do we have any other speakers in opposition to this ordinance? Okay, not hearing any. We have five minutes of rebuttal for the proponents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and also want to thank the, the neighbors who have come out, both from the church and, and residents. Just a few thoughts to, to sort of, kind of react, if you will, to some of the things that we've just heard. One is that change is always a concern, no matter where you are, and the, the incumbent upon us as developers, and all members of the community, including yourselves, to, to manage that change and make sure it goes in a good direction. And so I think that's what this, this, this conversation is about. For a couple of the, the comments that we just heard around, where should we build these projects? Chaberton has, has surveyed many properties here in the Suffolk area and the surrounding counties and cities as well, including those right up and down Route thirteen. We actually have some options on other properties in the area. We've been closed out or been able, not been able to develop some of those that may look like awesome places to go develop from the air, because of either grid limitations, meaning Dominion Power does not have the ability to put a solar project on in that location, or other environmental concerns, for instance, wetlands that surround the property just north of Lucy Cross, which some of the residents have, you know, suggested that we go take a closer look at, and we've had several contractors go out there and help us look at that, in addition to talking with DEQ. So that's just one piece to note around, you know, how do we find the areas to, to do things that are good for the environment and good for our communities, as you, as you process through that, that piece of it. Secondly, around the concept, again, of where we cite projects, one of the projects that our affiliate Greenbacker operates is right on the grounds of Convent in Washington, D.C., and I shared this information at the community meeting that, that showed that. And I just took another trip out there a couple of weeks ago, just to, again, sort of see the situation. This is right up against multiple residences and the, right on the convent grounds. Obviously, these are folks who really enjoy the peace and quiet. I had to seek out to find the inverters, you know, with my, with my, my hearing, with my senses, to see where they're actually located. You would not be able to tell, walking up to a random spa, part of the fence line there, where that is. So there really is not a noise concern, but again, sort of going above and beyond, if you will, by creating that no-inverter zone to try and give comfort level to, to the neighbors here and, and yourselves as we, as we develop this project. And finally, you know, we, there are about twenty-five neighbors, fifteen that live right there on Great Fork Road. We've, we've talked to all of them. Many of them are not here this evening, and I have a few other letters of support that I'd like to read if I have just a minute left. By our count, including the church, there's five out of twenty-five neighbors that, that would be in opposition. The church, obviously, is, is a bit divided. We've talked to many people, many members of the church who are in favor, and of course, those who are not. But if you think about the greater area there, neighborhood, by our count, it represents about five out of twenty-five that have come to speak here this evening. So for a couple of examples, here's a neighbor, right adjacent to the property, just excerpt from his letter of support. "I'm aware of the concerns this project has caused. Some of the neighbors on Great Fork Road, and I'm glad that many of them came out to the community meeting on May fifth at Great Fork Baptist Church. I attend, it was clear that many had the incorrect impression of the details of the project. In particular, it's unlikely the land under consideration remains in agriculture much longer, given the small size of the plot." This one here is a, Robert Branson lives on six oh five Great Fork Road. He actually used to farm the property. Says, "My properties are located next to the proposed solar project. I farmed that property years ago. I believe solar is a good use of the property and in favor of the project. I've taken time to think about it, even speak with a friend who lives nearby a couple other solar projects. It shouldn't be noisy and provide environmental benefits. I am in support of the project." And finally, this is just- And finally, this is just a handful of the letters of support that you also have in your packet. Mike Bradshaw from 3848 Adams Swamp Road. "I'm in favor of the proposed solar project, Lucy Cross Road. A solar project creates clean renewable energy while providing significant environmental benefits. Solar will be a good neighbor in this community. This project was designed to severe limit or eliminate any visual or noise concerns." So again, thank you for your time and for helping to think through this for the city of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doniger. This public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration, and a motion is in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Ward.
Mr. Williams.
Got you. Councilman Ward, did you want to speak?
Yes, I just want to, this particular time to pass it to Mr. Williams.
Hold on a second. I'll get you here. Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've listened to the attorney for the developer, as well as the residents on Great Fork Road, and I move that this project be denied.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's going to be some other comments here with my other colleagues, but I'll jump into frying pan first. You know, I love the idea of renewable energy, going green, solar, but, you know, we are getting a lot of interest in Suffolk for solar panels to come up. And that's because we have such a great enriched area of land in our 430 square miles of the city. And I get a little concerned, because as I go down through the Carolinas, I see these solar farms everywhere. It just blows my mind. I don't think this solar farm provides any benefit directly to the residents of Whaleyville. I don't think, unless somebody can come up here from the management company to tell me what kind of break they're going to get on their power bill, it's going right straight into Dominion, so we know where that probably is going. And yes, you know, the one gentleman come up and said, "There's going to be changes." And yes, there could be changes, but that doesn't mean it has to be changes in someone's backyard. There could be more suitable areas for that to happen. And this is not DC, this is Suffolk. The other thing is, I looked at another item in here that kind of troubled me a little bit, is Route 13 on Carolina Road. Going into Whaleyville is just one of the most tragic routes in this city for truck traffic, vehicle traffic. It's a two-lane road. There's no room for error on that road, and we find that out on many days when tractor-trailers collide head-on with vehicles, and people have crashes out on that roadway. And I know that delivery trucks are probably going to be minimal in the event that this were to be built, but it's still truck traffic added on to truck traffic. It's not going to get any better. The road's not going to ever get widened in my lifetime, and probably most of you in this room. So, we're going to continue to have that traffic coming up from the Carolinas, and now we're going to build this on top of it. And I know it's miniscule, but it still concerns me that... I think some of these, I think one statement was, "Maybe we should find more suitable places for these solar farms, and there may be some other sites." And the only thing that gets me is, "Why are you all coming to Suffolk to put these solar farms in? Have you run out of places to put them in other parts of our area of Virginia? And now we seem to be the picking ground to put solar farms in?" You know, we still, in my opinion, I would prefer to see nice homes built on that parcel than I would to see solar panels when I maybe ride down there. And I have to agree with one, the one lady, I believe her name was Ruth, that came up here. She talked about vegetation and how she's tried to grow something, and it's not getting off the ground too well. And so, how are these folks going to get this vegetation up any sooner than some of the people that lived in there for long periods of time? And I'm speaking to the people who live in Whaleyville, for the people who live in Whaleyville. So, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I'll reserve my vote here in a few minutes, but I'm really not sure where I want to go with this, because I just, quite frankly, I'm getting tired of seeing some solar panels, in my opinion. And I know we got to have it, and I know it's a renewable energy, and it's mandated by the state and the federal government and all this and that. One part that didn't mandate is where you put them. So, that's what we got to look at. So anyway, I appreciate the time and the reserved comment.
Councilman Johnson.
I probably should let Councilwoman Barlow go first. She'll be nicer than I'm going to be. But I'm going to say my piece. For the gentleman to stand up and say, "Change is a concern to the residents of this area," really? Change is a concern for all of us. And I'm prepared to sit here tonight and say that this city, our planning department, is not ready for this. We don't even understand what we're talking about with this solar thing going forward. We have got to do our homework, we've got to do our research, we've got to go out there. It's not really fair to the solar people either. We need to tell them what we want in our city. We do not want solar farms backing up homes. For goodness sake, folks, I've been approached for my farm, to put solar panels on my farm, more than once. It's all over this city. I don't know whether this is about money, or what it's about. Solar energy's fine, it's wonderful, but if it's such a wonderful thing, why in the hell of Pete don't we have it on every building in our city? We've got huge structures going up, and the solar panels should be on those first, not on valuable farmland. And please don't come to me and tell me, "That farm is too small to be profitable." You tell our farmers in this city, they've been farming these small pieces of land their whole lives, and maybe they don't make a ton of money on them, but they can, it can be farmed. Or better yet, you can sit out back on your patio and enjoy the vista. I feel very strongly about this, and I will second Mr. Williams' vote to deny. We are not ready for this. We, as a city, are not ready for this, and we've got to have more information. There's all types of solar farms, there's all types of facilities. We're not educated enough, and I dare say, I don't think our staff is. This is too new to us, and for us to approve these developments, just because developers are telling us we should, is a huge mistake. I'm sorry for the landowners. Landowners have rights. They have rights to do something with their property, but their neighbors have rights as well. Your city has a right to make our city an attractive place to live, make our city a place that we want people to come to. And I kind of agree with Mr. Fawcett. I don't want to see panels in my backyard. I don't want to ride down the road and see them. I'm still not happy with the one over on 460 we keep talking about. They're supposedly going to improve. And as far as the landscape goes, making these landscape improvements, you do realize that for 30 years, this landscape has to be maintained, and has to be looked after, and money has to be spent. And is that going to happen? I don't think so. It worries me where we're going with this thing, and it shouldn't be this way. So for that reason, I am 100% opposed at this time, and not, I'm more than willing to look down the road at what we can possibly do for solar, but right now, I'm sorry, guys, I'm 100% opposed.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. So Tim said a lot of, Councilmember Johnson said a lot of what I wanted to say, but to add on to some of his points, I think that the city is a point where we need to have a very specific and comprehensive plan for solar development. We, as Councilmember Johnson said, we really don't have a very good plan right now, and the approvals are kind of willy-nilly. And we, to be fair to the landowners and to be fair to the solar companies, we need to have a better process for applying for these and situating them and so forth. I appreciate the efforts from Chapperton and the folks that spoke on their behalf to try to make this more acceptable to the folks in the neighborhood, but I'd like to point out a few things. I'm a farmer, you all know that I'm a farmer, or I hope you know that I'm a farmer. If you don't, you know now. And I would submit to you that what we do on our farm is we collect solar energy, we sequester carbon with the crops that we grow, and we also produce food and fiber. And in my book, those are really important things. I'm not against solar energy. We need electricity too. I hate it when mine goes out. So I'm not opposed to the solar energy, but I think converting agricultural land to collecting solar energy, it's a sideways trade of green energy. I'm already collecting solar energy, I'm already sequestering carbon. And the statement that was made that it's not economically viable to keep this land in agriculture production at this time is because the solar companies are being subsidized by the government, to a point where I cannot pay rent that competes with the amount of money that they're offering landowners. So yes, it's not economically viable for the landowner, it's not economically viable for me to compete with the amount of money that they're offering. So I hope that in the future, the city will sit down and have a conversation. City Council needs to have a conversation, Planning Commission needs to have a conversation, and figure out how we're going to deal with it. And Councilman Foster, to your point, this is going on all over the state, and Dominion Energy is mandated to put this into place by the General Assembly. I appreciate the efforts that they're making, but I think we have to have an organized way to grow this industry if we're going to have it in the Commonwealth and in the city of Suffolk. So with those points, I'd like to say I stand also in opposition of this project. Not that this is inherently a bad project, I just think that before we begin to continue to approve these, we have to have a better plan. Thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, well, I spoke the last time, is that I noticed that the whole church came up. One said 85, one said 30. Developers had one person to come up, so I'm always aware of how many people, especially in the community, respond to any type of development. So, right then and there, I noticed that the people was in denial, but, and the reason why I passed it to Mr. Williams was he is the councilperson, and he'd been informing that he'd having a lot of phone calls, so I thought that was his privilege to go and decide which way he wanted to go with the project. So, I'm in denial of the project also.
Okay, I just have a few comments. First of all, I think we need to put some of this into perspective. Everybody's got legitimate points. I want to thank the applicant for bending over backwards to do what they could to mitigate the issues that the citizens were concerned with, but bottom line is, they're still concerned with them. When it comes to solar farms, I mean, obviously, there are many incentives moving forward. This is going to continue, just like everybody said, across the state, and especially in our city with the rural area that we have. I think we do need to address our UDO and our guidelines, and that's what they are, they would be guidelines, for the installation of solar farms, in particular zoning designations, which obviously agricultural is the least dense and probably the only zoning designation that would allow for solar farms with a conditional use permit. And we have to realize that a conditional use permit is just that, it's conditional. It's not etched in stone. There's not anywhere in our city where you would be able to establish, create a solar farm that would not, by right. You could not do it by right. It would be subject to a conditional use permit. Because it is subject to a conditional use permit, then the decision becomes subjective. It's not cut and dry. It's not fill in this box, fill in that box. You will have a minimum requirement, and that minimum requirement would either be supported by staff, or the staff would feel that they did not satisfy those minimal requirements, and then it would go to the Planning Commission for their input, as well as the citizens' input, and then to us. So, like I said, I commend the applicants for bending over backwards to try to make it work. I think we will get a better, well, not so much a grip on it, because regardless of what we establish, if we say setback goes from 150 to 450, well, this applicant has already agreed to do 450. Those are just the guidelines. It is still going to be subject to the other issues that affect property values in the community and everyone else. That's why they're subjective. It behooves every applicant on every CUP to do what they did to engage the community, to make sure that they're on board with it, because it is a consideration in our decisions. And I would just state one thing that's Exhibit A in the Planning Commission, and I think it pretty much is just one short sentence, but it kind of sums up where we are right now. One of the reasons for recommending denial would be, will have more adverse effects on the health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in or driving through the neighborhood. And that in itself would give one pause to consider approval or not. So without any other comment, we have a motion from Councilman Williams for denial, with a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote.
Yes means...
The motion, I'll restate the motion. The motion from Councilman Williams was for denial, so if you vote yes, it's to deny. And if you vote no, you would be in favor of it. So please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, motion passes for denial. Okay, our next, we will move to ordinances. We have an ordinance to amend Chapter 86, Section 86-291 of the Code of the City of Suffolk, restricting through traffic on Little Fork Road, Collins Road, and Drumhill Road. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, Mr. Darrell Lewis, interim Assistant Director of Public Works, will provide the staff report. Darrell.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, and city staff. I'm here to provide information on the ordinance for your consideration. At the request of citizens living along Little Fork Road, our traffic engineering conducted a truck restriction study. The request was to restrict truck traffic along Little Fork Road between Whaleyville Road and the North Carolina State Line. In the course of conducting the study, we realized that trucks would naturally divert to other routes. So with that, we included Collins Road and Drumhill Road in the study, as they're similar composition to Little Fork Road. Similarly, I want to point out that Great Fork Road, which is to the northeast of the study area, has a current truck restriction, and some of those trucks are coming down Little Fork Road. As I mentioned, Little Fork Road, Collins Road, and Drumhill Road, they're all similar geometrically. They're all considered local roads, designed to carry local traffic, and not designed to carry the weight of the commercial trucks that are conversing it. Also, I want to mention, they're classified as local roads. They have 18-foot of pavement, which means nine foot per lane. They have winding sections and some slight vertical curves, which affect the site distance. Also, the shoulders are generally grass areas, and they have open ditch areas, and surrounding the roads are trees. So with that, it's our recommendation that council establish a no-through-truck zone along these three routes between Whaleyville Road and the North Carolina State Line. And upon your approval, Public Works would install the regulatory signs for enforcement by Suffolk Police Department. Police Department. And this is just an overview of the area for reference, in case you're not fully aware of it. And the last slide is a restatement of our recommendations. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. An ordinance presented for council's consideration, questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve the ordinance as presented.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg?
Second motion, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any further discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Hearing none. Members of city council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions this evening, nor do we have any staff reports. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing on July seventh, 2021, to receive public comment on an ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed between the City of Suffolk and Birdco Energy Incorporated for the vacation of a public utility easement located on Tax Map in parcel thirty-four G twenty-nine, Princes A, asterisk one, asterisk two. A motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Williams?
So move.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
A second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Councilman Goldberg and Williams, you're okay? You don't want to speak again, right? Don't hit the button yet. Okay, hearing none. Members of city council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, July seventh, 2021, at four p.m., unless canceled. A motion be in order? Councilman Fawcett? And Councilman Williams? A second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And it will now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, would please explain the guidelines?
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers of PNRV four city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Carolyn White, forty-two sixteen Colt Train Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Pewsville Infrastructure.
I'll speak again on stormwater fees and tax increase. Now, I looked up right on the internet, so you don't have to go to a class. You can sit at your home, and you can watch it on the internet. The internet can speak to you. It says background summary of the stormwater issuance here in Suffolk. In December of two thousand and five, the Suffolk City Council passed an ordinance creating the stormwater utility. As part of the process in developing the utility, the city appointed a Citizens Advisory Committee to assist in developing policies and procedures that would make the utility user charge as equitable as possible to all citizens and businesses within Suffolk and consistent with other cities in Hampton Roads. This accord was with the UDO, or the United Unified Development Ordinance, Article six, Section thirty-one dash six-eleven-five. As you know, Pewsville don't have any drainage. We've been paying since two thousand and five. It's recorded here. So my thing tonight is, again, we're telling you that VDOT said in two thousand and six, right after this was passed, to put in the urban system for all the streets. Well, we're still here now since two thousand and six, when it was adopted. We still don't have any drainage. We don't have any sidewalks. We don't have any guttering. And last week, when we had that flooded rain, we took pictures again. So we beg you all, we plead with you again. No new taxes, no increase. We're paying everybody's taxes. I told you we had new developments, and it's mostly military housing. And you know they don't even charge them taxes. So we're taking up the road for everybody. And it's time to stop. Thank you.
Emoteh Mohammed, ten-one-ten South Fifth Street, representing Virginia Organizing Regarding Criminal Justice and Police Reform.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Again, my name is Emoteh Mohammed. I'm a leader in the Suffolk community and a member of the Virginia Organizers Suffolk Chapter. I'm here tonight to express the concerns and issues that are important to the community. One of the concerns is that Suffolk is in need of a permanent police chief. In the wake of the George Floyd incident, and all the shootings of unarmed African-American men and women and children, right, there is a need for more police transparency and more police accountability. It seems that some police officers, right, are disregarding human rights at all levels. African-Americans have been, have a target on their backs. Police officers are inflicting bodily harm, which amounts to police brutality on people of color. There is little to no repercussions because of a systematic racism. People of color are directly affected by bad policing. This is happening at traffic stops. We met with interim Chief Al Chandler. Good man. I really like him. In April, to discuss these issues that are important to us, he said, you know, in so many words that he had very little power. I can understand. His hands are tied. And Suffolk needs to hire a permanent police chief. What is taking the city council so long to do this? The other issue is, we had on October eighth, 2020, Virginia Organizers and other community organizations held a Suffolk Meritorial Candidate Forum for all candidates, such as Lynda Johnson, Brian Bass, Vanessa Harris, and yourself, sir, Mike Dooman. The question was asked to you, Mr. Dooman, if elected, would you be in support of Suffolk having a civilian review board? Your response was yes. I'm in support of, this is you quoting, I'm in support of having a civilian review board. Again, why hasn't this happened yet? The first step would be to hire a permanent police chief, who states that a civilian review board is a priority. Finally, we have been trying to reach you via email, telephone, Mr. Dooman, or Mayor Dooman, and Vice Mayor Bennett. We have sent numerous emails and put numerous calls into your office to no avail. We are your constituents. We created a platform and hosted the Meritorial Candidate Forum, and invited you and other candidates to engage with the people in the community. We need you to follow through with supporting a CRB. In summary, we need a permanent police chief. We want the police chief to implement, excuse me, a civilian review board. We also want a new chief to implement other new reforms that would deescalate situations where there is no firearms. Police officers need new training at all levels, excuse me, areas in reference to traffic stops and engaging with people of color. Thank you.
Thank you all for your guidance.
Tion Ashby, seven-oh-nine St. James Avenue, representing self regarding the criminal justice and police reform.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tion Ashby. I'm at seven-oh-nine St. James Avenue in Suffolk. And I'm a member with the Virginia Organizing Chapter in Suffolk. We all seen the incident with the Army Lieutenant that got pepper sprayed in a traffic stop by a police officer in Windsor. It's not far from us. And the Army Lieutenant was in uniform, and he was still dehumanized. And that Army Lieutenant looked just like me. And we both were people of color. And every person of color, male, female, are directly affected by police practices of law enforcement. And that's one of the main reasons why that position need to be filled, towards we have a permanent police chief. My main concern in speaking with you today, Mayor, City Council, is that we move forward into getting, what to say, criminal justice and police reform. Say, I've heard several law enforcement say that the shooting of unarmed African-Americans would not happen in their city or county. But these same cities and counties are not taking actions or measures to eradicate police brutality. The community is demanding for a civilian review board, one that could bring public trust. The community wants transparency and police accountability. We don't want to jump in front of it when it happens. We want things to be in place. So if something transpired in the city of Suffolk, it has the necessary elements in place. And we would like to schedule a meeting with each and every city council member and go over the surveys that are conducted in each meeting in the city and the communities of Suffolk. And I want to thank each and everyone for what you do. Thank you.
Pamela Brandy, fifty-sixteen Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Pewsville.
Welcome again, city council. I'm back. Who am I? I'm that lady. That lady that come again and again about Pewsville and the things that's going on in Pewsville. We are a historical black community that has two localities, Chesapeake and Suffolk. We go to Chesapeake City Council. We come to Suffolk City Council, talking about the same thing. You all spoke about coming together on the Master Drainage Plan. Your plan has always been on a proposal, and now that proposal is noninvolvement because of Mr. Hanson and city managers and planning department have allowed builders to build right in the path, as they say, of y'all proposed plant that's supposed to take the water out. One of the concerns that we have is that since you put in your coves, y'all have never once came out and cleaned those coves. And guess what happens? We get the water. It floods our homes. Chesapeake side is the valley side of Pewsville, and we get all the water externally from your side because you all don't clear anything out. And we ask you when you're going to do something about it. Everything that we all have spoke about is nothing new. We have three council people here that's supposed to be working for Pewsville. Three. Father, Son, and a Holy Ghost. I'm standing with Jesus. You all pray before meetings, nothing's happened. Y'all don't come out. We only have one city council person come out. Most of y'all have grew up, walked these Berry Street, know exactly what we're talking about. But you don't come out to see anything or to do anything. And then your planning department, you can plan to build and grow Suffolk. We have no complaints or concern about growing Suffolk, except when you grow it on top of Pewsville. The residents, the elderly people, that have built this place, and they are still standing. But you're allowing the water to come on their homes, and they have to continue to rebuild every time it floods. And we spoke of one resident, a hundred and three, that passed. It's heartbreaking that she didn't get to see where y'all now have came out and kind of leveled the park, but it still have a lot of flood. There was a church that had service on Sunday in the water, where we was trying to keep the children out of the nasty water. However, y'all plan is just a red circle around Pewsville. See how large it is? What you doing about the inside? You letting builders build on top of our properties, where people, soon as someone sells their property, the next day, builders are building on top, putting nothing but a drain pipe where no water can go out anywhere, still coming on us. Couple of things I'd like for you to consider. The problem that we're having that you might want to look into. One, neither Chesapeake North Suffolk has provided a state or national historical registry application recognizing the black-owned community heritage. Developers and builders are going to individual heirs and multiple heirs of African-American landowners to obtain individual partial. This is a civil rights violation. Three, Pewsville required residents to require and reduce, address both in Suffolk and Chesapeake, and is an undue burden and equality environmental justice issue. The stormwater issue overtakes overtaking a black-owned community wealth through real estate practices, flooding of yards, and areas unprepared, and roads and drainage in two localities. By the way, if you don't know the history, June nineteenth, Saturday, Pewsville and the community will be in the park, and we're going to tell the history, the true history. We ask each and every one of you to come out and see it. We'll be there from noon to sunset. And the three, council people that have Pewsville, we definitely like to see you there. Because next time we come, we would like to hear from you and do a CIP for us, and put money into the community to help us, not to overtake us. Thank you. And by the way, that lady, I shall be back. Pam Brandy. Have a blessed day.
Wayne White, forty-two sixteen Colt Train Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville infrastructure.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of council. My name is Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. Last week, I got here a little late, so I wasn't able to speak. So can I do two this time? He said, yeah, I know I can't though. Okay. First of all, Pam mentioned about the park on Sunday, I was out there. Mosquitoes are terrible. I don't know if we put bricks in the water there, will the mosquitoes be gone by Saturday? But we're planning a grand event on Saturday. The vice mayor asked Robert Lewis if the developers was helping in any way with the Pewsville drainage. Mr. Lewis replied, no, that was at the May 5th council meeting. I don't know if you guys received pictures. We sent you some pictures of a house. It was sent to Chesapeake and City, Chesapeake and Suffolk City Council. CASA investors purchased the property from model homes, which was Ronald Byrd. He tried for two years to build on the same property and was told no until he finally gave up and sold. Please view, please view the two pictures that were sent to you. Now, V, the CASA has also purchased property, again, down John Street. And the master drainage and the formal public works stated that the work will be done on John Street piping to the Chesapeake end of VDOT's double drainage pipes. So everyone, so everybody told a lie when it comes to Pewsville. The houses that are built there, you wouldn't believe where pipes that he put in the ground are running. Years ago, the developer tried to turn ditch one way, it wouldn't go, so he put the pipes underneath the first house. And the other, the next two houses that he built, the pipes are within two, three feet of the houses that they're built. When we had the last rain, that water came out of those pipes, right back into the pipes that he put in the front ditch, but it's not going to work. Okay. The next thing, we've been asking, I mean, for years and years and years, if you're not going to do all the Pewsville urban, please put a sidewalk downtown Point Road. The kids can't get to the park, they can't get to that fabulous trail y'all built, they can't get to it. Because whenever they in the street, if a car is coming both ways, the kids have to get in the ditch. I saw two, two young fellas last week drove their bikes in the ditch because traffic was coming both ways. They can't get, and the traffic don't, they don't, they don't, they don't move out your way. They try to run over you. I think that's what they be trying to do. But that's not, that's not the correct thing to do. And like I said years ago, please, please, please don't let one of our kids get run over on Town Point Road. That way, we can get them people in our community, and you don't want to have 50 to 100 people coming here telling you, we need this because one of our kids got hurt on Town Point Road. Please do whatever you can, help us. We come here begging, begging, and begging for you to do something for Pewsville. You know, we know that, you know, you've heard how VDOT has given us money, given you money, well, have given the city money, and nothing has been done. I, I wouldn't say nothing has been done, but what needs to be done has not been done. I thank you.
Roosevelt Jones, 5809 Hawk Lane, representing the Greater Oakland Chucka Tuck Sandy Bottom Civic League regarding infrastructure.
Good afternoon, city manager, mayor Duma, council members. You know, this is my second time coming to the city council. And the reason why I'm coming, because just like I said the last time, when I was here, I'm sick of promises. And look like when I come, Pewsville and Chucka Tuck is almost piggybacking about the same thing. So something got to be wrong. You know, I can recall back in the day with Mr. Jackson, Mr. Thomas Turner, Mrs. Junius Graves, all of our legend people that I watched as I grew up with infrastructure. You know, those men were men. They got out with shovels and doing a better job with the ditches that the city's doing now. You know, as I look back, I look at VDOT. VDOT did a good job. We never had these problems until the city of Suffolk taken over. You know, when they come through, the, the work that they are doing is half done. I walk through the community with the, with the mayor, our new council person, I'm tired of walking and not getting any results. Renrod, the superintendent went down from the public work, and you should see the poor work that they did for their young lady. Because I don't know whether they took her as not being educated. You know, they just went in and they just did something and said, well, we did this. But I'm very angry about that because we got to treat peoples just like they are human. We pay taxes, and I must continue to come here till something happens. My pastor told me, said pray until something happens. I believe in that. But when I look out for you, I supported you, but my mind is changing. We've had to change. I met the city hall, because on my application, I said that I would speak about infrastructure and some civil matters. I met the chief of police today. We need a chief of policemen that can relate to our black people. You know, it's sad to say, we still have too much prejudice on the police departments, and we need someone that we can relate to and probably do all of this, you know, I can't put my hands on what is happening, but the people seem to me that they're disgusted with this, with this city, you know, and, and just like I said a few minutes ago, I will be back until I see something happen. Thank you very much. And don't forget, Monday night, we will be having a town hall meeting at the Oakland Elementary School from 6:00 to 6:30. And some of these things that I have listed, we're going to stay within our agenda. Thank you very much.
Kelvin Johnson, 4984 Y Street, representing the Hosanna Christian Fellowship Church regarding
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, vice mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kelvin Johnson. I pastor Hosanna Christian Fellowship Church. We've been in the Pewsville community for about four years. As some of the members of the civic league told you, we held a community service out in Pewsville Park on this past Sunday. And to my surprise, you know, we're always looking for ways to be fishermen of men, you know, bring people in, embrace the community. I think Pewsville is a beautiful historic area, and we want to be an integral part of the community. So Sunday, our congregation had church at the Pewsville Park. And to my surprise, first, we found out that there was no place to even relieve ourselves, no restrooms in a public park. Secondly, there was no electricity to play any instruments as of such, which is just, I guess, just blew my mind a little bit. Thirdly, we asked to have the gate to the park open because it's locked and there's no access to go in there. Since there is no restrooms, we actually rented a porta potty. So the children and a lot of the seniors would have access to use the restroom. And we were told that they couldn't unlock the gate, so we had to sit it on the, on the outside of the porta potty, of the, of the park. And then during the service, as you've heard from some of the members of the civic league, the park, the water in and around the park was black. It was black water in there, black frogs sitting on pipes, the mayflies, the mosquitoes, and the wasps. They had a feast on the residents and the congregation. So I just think that's just completely unacceptable. And it's, it's a lot of potential there, but something needs to be done. This is the 21st century, and being in Pewsville Park felt like the dark ages. Felt like it's just stone ages, took us back so far from where we come. Taxpayers have had enough of it. You heard it from other residents there. I would hate to have to bring the congregation down here, show you how serious we are. But this is totally unacceptable. Taxpayers had enough, storm fees are a joke when no water leaves Pewsville. That's ridiculous in 2021. No taxes should be increased until some benefits or some improvements are rendered to the Pewsville community. Now, I pray tonight that my pleas and my, don't fall on deaf ears, because this will not be the last time I'll be here. I appreciate your time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Crittenon Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding an upcoming town hall.
Good evening. Pardon my allergies. I am not sick, and it is so good to see everyone back up on the Diaz and be closer to you where I might see your faces. My name is Kelly Hangler, and I stated my address before, but I am the civic league president, and Claudia Holland is here with me, as well as Roosevelt Jones from Chucka Tuck, Greater Chucka Tuck Oakland area and Pewsville. We're inviting all of the civic leagues to please come forward and speak to city council on your issues, as well as stay in contact with your council member. This is how we are going to be able to move forward to get the issues that are happening within the city resolved. Welcome to our new city manager. So I want to put a fine point on something. We have a new mayor after 14 years, and we also have a new permanent city manager. Underneath that, what a lot of people I find don't understand is that we are ruled here in Virginia, and specifically in Suffolk, Virginia, by a county, county and city, a council and city manager type administration. So most folks don't even realize that, you know, our council members, our mayor is not full time. This is not New York City. This is not Philadelphia. This is not Houston. This is not big, big city, where a mayor gets hired full time, gets paid a big, big salary, and starts making all kinds of terminations in who he hires for districts and who he hires for positions. Virginia is Virginia, and at this time, our model charter for the city of Suffolk is driven by the fact that we have an administrator and we have a mayor with council. These are our legislators, and here is our administrator and all the departments underneath that. That is very succinct, okay? We have not had that clarity in a very long time, and we've not had a lot of change that it is coming to Suffolk in a positive way. But what has also happened is de-investment in our communities. In 2009, President Obama declared the Chesapeake Bay a national treasure. It has taken 12 years because it takes the federal government about 10 years in a cycle, okay? And any policy that is put into place at the federal, state, or even local level, sometimes to really get its footing over 10-year period of time. You work out the bugs and things happen. In October of 2020, another big, huge amount of money was just re-designated in a bipartisan move of the federal government to refund the restoration again of the Chesapeake Bay. Why am I telling you down this here in Suffolk, Virginia? We have got to get over the fact that this area is now and always will be our farmers, okay? It always will be, it is the heart of us. We need to have ecotourism areas carved out. We need to reinvest in the existing communities. We are beyond out of balance, and this is what the people are feeling. And I hear tonight, and thank you, I heard your comments earlier, that we're working towards some new planning, and our, our comprehensive plan is coming forward. We're going to have to. I stated for you before, 130,000 people are expected to trend here to Suffolk because we have the landmass. We've got to do it, we've got to do it right, and we've got to do it now. So Mr. Roosevelt and the young lady he referred to lives in her grandparents' house, and she's 80 years old, and she's beautiful, and she loves on Ren, and her ditch looks like somebody saw toothed it out in the middle of the night while they were drunk, okay? It's bad. The drainage is bad. Our people need stormwater wherever they're living currently in their current communities. They've paid their taxes, they are constituents in the city of Suffolk. We are going to keep coming forward and forward and forward again, and to understand that that 60,000-foot look I told you about with the Chesapeake Bay is coming here. We're going forward and asking for the grant funding that comes from that watershed of funding from the federal government to the state and down. We're recognizing our history in all of our old existing communities and embracing our new communities. And to that note, I will end with this tonight. I'm coming forward from all of our community, okay, that on June 28th, the town hall meeting is actually going to occur across all of Chucka Tuck Borough. Everyone is invited, we want all the civic leagues to come out. But this is in specific to get sanitation and support into the community backed with grant money, okay, and to do it in a way that doesn't tear up our beloved Chucka Tuck, okay, and Oakland. And we want those people, Hobson, Sandy Bottom, Outkorn and Eclipse, to be there, please. And all the new communities, come and support, come and hear who has come to the town hall meeting. It is borough-wide and across Suffolk. To that note, please know that we don't have the finished streets over in Eclipse, but we are going to have the parade on Saturday, July 3rd, thanking our fire department and our police department also to be part of that parade, starting off at Ebenezer Church and be completed by 10:30. And we're excited for that. It's taken a lot of collaboration to get there. And that's the word of the day, yo. We need partners and collaboration. For every problem, there's already a solution, and we're going to connect that. And one Virginia. Thank you and good night.
That completes the speakers, mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The first item for consideration under new business is a motion to nominate and appoint the following individuals to the respective boards and commissions. The Economic Development Authority, the city of Suffolk, the Chucka Tuck Borough, Margie Wiley. The Finer Arts Commission, Catherine Wass. The Human Services Advisory Board, Betty Montgomery. The Planning Commission, Kithril Eberwine. Johnny Edwards, Gerald Goodman, and Arthur Singleton. The Suffolk Clean Community Commission, Audrey Dennis and Amanda Schuler. And the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Quentin Franklin.
Okay, motion is in order. Counselor person Shelley Butler-Barlow?
To approve.
Councilman Fawcett?
Second her motion.
Is there any discussion in the motion? If so, please reuse your request to speak button. Hearing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero. The second item is a resolution appointing Williamie Hutchings as city attorney. Whereas the city council has determined that Williamie Hutchings is the most qualified person to serve as city attorney, having been appointed on July 1st, 2021. Whereas it is the intention of city council to provide the city attorney with other benefits and working conditions comparable to those provided to employees of the city, now therefore be resolved, the council of the city of Suffolk, Virginia pursuant to City Code Section 9.02, hereby appoints Williamie Hutchings as city attorney of the city of Suffolk. Be it further resolved, the city attorney shall be paid an annual salary of $180,250. Be it further resolved that the monthly automobile allowance of the city attorney shall be $500. Be it resolved that all provisions of the city charter and city code and the regulations and rules of the city relating to retirement, vacations, sick and other leave, insurance, holidays, and other fringe benefits, and working conditions as they now exist and here into after, may be amended, shall also apply to the city attorney as they would for city employees of the city. Now further be it resolved that the resolution shall be effective July 1st, 2021.
Motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir, mayor. It gives me great pleasure to go ahead and say that I'd like to approve this resolution.
A motion from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? If so, please use your request to speak button. Councilman Williams?
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Nothing? False alarm. Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there any other new business items that, uh, from any member of council that would require action? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and comments. At this time, we'll ask meeting and community relations director Diana Klink for her announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Tonight's announcements include several recent and upcoming events and outreach efforts to our citizens. A historical milestone in roadway projects took place on June 3rd with the official groundbreaking ceremony for the Route 58 Holland Road Project. Mayor Dooman, fellow council members, other elected officials and special guests from VDA, the Virginia Port Authority and various contractors joined public works staff at this event that has literally been more than 10 years in the making. This project is not only important on a local level, but is also significant on a regional, statewide and international level affecting the port of Virginia. The road widening and multiple other improvements along this busy corridor will further enhance existing and continuing growth and development. Funding for this massive 3.1-mile widening project is possible through federal, state and local dollars with motorists traveling the busy corridor eventually reaping a more convenient, less congested and safer commute. One of the first noted changes during this early stage of the project is that the center lane in the 1500 block of Route 58 Holland Road between Stela Drive and US 13 bypass will be permanently closed as the center lane will be eliminated in final roadway configuration and a concrete median is to be installed. This closure is implemented now for safety in order to eliminate accidents and traffic congestion to prevent vehicles and trucks from attempting left turns. We thank everyone in advance for their patience and ask that they be especially alert to new signage, barrels and traffic patterns as well as the safety of the contractors in the area. Without a doubt, we are fortunate to have an amazing team of public safety personnel serving our citizens. Watch with me now a portion of the Hampton Roads Chamber Valor Awards that took place on June 8th. Roll the video, please, Andy.
Our next investigative merit award is for Suffolk Police. Will Suffolk Mayor Michael Dooman and Suffolk Interpol Police Chief Alfred Chandler please come to the stage?
Suffolk Police Investigators Dee White and G. Parker fought through the pandemic to halt the sale and distribution of heroin, cocaine and scheduled pills and splitting opioids. They worked with federal DEA agents to capture a local heroin dealer which led to identifying and apprehending two higher-level targets, seizing the drugs and a firearm.
Now, those involved are facing federal indictments for their part in this criminal conspiracy. Investigators White and Parker devoted themselves to this case through to the very end. While this case alone won't solve the opioid epidemic, it will make it known to those who chose to spread this poison on the streets of Hampton Roads that there are those like these investigators, like Investigators White and Parker, who will stand in their way and bring them to justice for their fines.
Suffolk Police Investigators Dee White and G. Parker, please come forward to accept your awards for investigative merit.
On February 25th of 2021, Suffolk Police Officer Zachary Hyman responded to a single-vehicle crash on Portsmouth Boulevard. The car was sinking in a water-filled ditch. Officer Hyman had only moments to free a baby, a baby from her car seat before the cabin filled with water.
If someone told me I had to jump in the freezing cold water again, I'd pick it up. Dispatch had received a call for a single-vehicle crash with injuries. A vehicle had run off the road. They said the car was actually sinking and that people were trapped inside. When I got there, all I saw was a panicking person inside the road. Immediately knew I just had to jump in the water. Jumped in and that's when I saw there were two other bystanders, um, passing by citizens that were helping me. It was freezing, freezing cold. I've never been so cold in my life. So I jumped in to the back right passenger side and I could hear the baby crying. She was on her car seat. I've never tried to undo a car seat harness. So I pulled my pocket knife out and I had to feel around carefully, cut towards myself, but did not want to hurt her. Was able to cut one strap off, cut a second strap off. And then while I was cutting, um, talking about when seconds count, she was gurgling water is how close it was. After I cut her out, I was able to hand her through the back, broken one shoulder. Healed on her end. That's when I transitioned back and went to the front passengers to get her out.
It's great to catch the bad guy. It's great to solve the crime, but there's nothing that's more rewarding than saving human lives. That's what we are here for. He never gave up. He continued to work and work for our citizens. Um, this is truly what we are here for.
Will Suffolk Police Officer Zachary Hyman please come up to the stage to accept your Valor Award?
Well, we have one final category this afternoon and this is a new category that we're introducing this year. It is regional valor. Hampton Roads Chamber works diligently to be a regional collaborator and the events of September 9th, 2020 led to a display of overwhelming regional cooperation and teamwork to save citizens trapped by raging floodwaters. Crews from Suffolk, Newport News, Isle of Wight and Smithfield worked together to execute these rescues.
And I'll wipe on you that morning. We had had a lot of rains and we anticipated some flooding, but not necessarily to the extent. A whole lot of water, all at one time.
We had one victim in the water. The pit was about middle of the way down, against, ten against the guardrail. The water was high enough to where it was about at the bottom of his tail light.
Was it an elderly man who couldn't get out? The water was rising?
The incident commander at the scene, uh, at the time realized that we need regional resources from Suffolk and then Newport News.
The only way we could get to him was letting the water push us against the guardrail. And then we followed the guardrail to his truck. He didn't know what he was doing. He was actually bailing water out of his truck.
Within a matter of minutes, it was pretty much coming over the, the bed of the truck.
Got him out of his pickup truck. Newport News brought the boat to us. We put him in the boat. The water was moving fast and Zodiac wasn't, didn't have enough power to overcome the current. Newport News guys and Smithfield guys rigged a haul system to haul us back.
Well, if our partner is written as normal family, really.
It's one big fire department in Hampton Roads that will respond to lifestyle incidents, performs very, very seamlessly and executes very well.
Something mattered to patch for any uniform who works seamlessly together, which benefits the citizens and the visitors of the Hampton Road region.
Kind of what we do, we train, maintain and operate. We were able to get that done and do that in a effective, safe manner.
Will Suffolk Fire Rescue Chief Michael Barak, Isle of Wight Fire Chief Pat Humphreys, Smithfield Fire Chief Chris Edwards and Newport News Assistant Fire Chief Todd Edgerson, please come to the stage to accept your awards for regional valor.
We can't thank these professionals enough, not only for their sacrifices and selfless dedication, but for what they do day in and day out. Just amazing work. The City of Suffolk Social Services Department has launched a new, more convenient online appointment system for clients for virtual or in-person appointments. Social Services is currently providing most services by appointment only. Clients can visit the Social Services website and click on the book an appointment button on the page. If customers require assistance booking an appointment, it's recommended they call 757-514-7450 or email the site located on the screen. An open house has been scheduled by the Suffolk Planning and Community Development Department for Wednesday, June 30th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at Suffolk City Hall in order for the public to provide input on the proposed update to the sign ordinance. The informal presentation will be held in City Hall Lobby and staff will be on hand to answer any questions. The open house may be especially informative for local business and real estate professionals to attend in order for them to provide their input, comments and to understand proposed revisions. Additional information, including the draft document and links to view the previous city council presentation on the topic, can be found on the Planning and Community Development website. The Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue is pleased to now offer a program providing enhanced fire and life, life safety for those that are hearing impaired within our community. The Hearing Impaired Smoke Alarm Program offers a complement of special devices designed to alert deaf and hard-of-hearing occupants when smoke or fire is detected. Residents of the City of Suffolk can obtain further information as well as schedule installation and personal instruction on these specialized alarms by contacting Suffolk Fire Marshal's Office at 514-4540. Suffolk Police Department is, excuse me, Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue is also happy to announce the return of their popular summer fire and life safety camps geared to youth ages six to nine. The half-day local camp runs Monday through Friday and exposes children to what it's like to be a firefighter with Suffolk Fire and Rescue with a variety of fun, challenging, entertaining and educational activities. The mission of the camp is to teach children safety lessons on things around their homes and schools, which they encounter every day. There will be two sessions, one starting on July 26th and the other on August 9th. The registration deadline is July 2nd, 2021, so please take advantage of this exciting program. Repairs at Suffolk Parks and Recreation Cypress Park Pool are complete and the pool opened for the season on Saturday, June 12th. Cypress Park Pool, located at 2001 Arizona Avenue, offers public open swim, group swim times, youth swimming lessons and party rentals by prepaid reservations. Visit the website for the operation schedule and to view more pool information. Suffolk Parks and Recreation TGIF Summer Concert Series will start this Friday evening at Constance Wharf Park and Marina. There will be four concerts at Constance Wharf before the series shifts to Bennett's Creek Park for four more events starting in late July. This family-friendly concerts are free and open to the public. Suffolk City offices will be closed on Friday, June 18th in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday. There will be no change in the trash and recycling collection for the period of June 15th through June 18th as a result of the holiday. The immensely popular Stars and Stripes Spectacular will return on Sunday, July 4th, also at the Constance Wharf Park and Marina. Park opens at 5:30 with the popular band Island Boy performing at 6. Additional entertainment, family-friendly activities and vendors will also be on hand with fireworks beginning at 9 o'clock. There is no onsite parking. Parking and transportation will be available from the Godwin Courts Building, City Hall Parking Lot and First Baptist Church. Suffolk Health Department wants to remind us, of course, that they and VDH note that for residents seeking a vaccine to visit vaccinefinder.org. This site is being used to advertise new and existing vaccine openings and for scheduling. This is a great way for citizens to utilize the existing infrastructure for a free COVID-19 vaccine. Also, as a reminder, residents with questions about the vaccination process or needing assistance in pre-registering for vaccines with the VDH can contact the State Call Center at 1-877-VAXIN-VIRGINIA. The call center is open seven days a week from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we leave you now with, as always, our main number for citizens to contact should they need information as well as the additional multitude of ways that we reach out to share information with our citizens. With that, I say good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Klink. Now we'll move on to announcements from City Council and we'll start with Councilperson Butler-Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first all, uh, first off, I'd like to say, uh, as always, thank you to the citizens who come out and speak to us here at City Council. It means a lot that you take time out of your schedule to come and bring your concerns to us and we are listening and I know things never happen as fast as we want, but um, rest assured that, but the, that we are working on things. So thank you again for turning out. Um, several people mentioned it and I will mention it as well. We will be having a town hall meeting in the Chukatuck Borough. It will take place June 28th at 6:30 at Oakland Elementary School. And we will be discussing some things that are concerned to the community. Um, on another note, I just would like to remind everybody that the governor has announced that this is Virginia Agriculture Week. And if you have had anything to eat today or if you have clothes on, you need to thank some of your farmers that are around that we're out here. You have to find, you have to look hard for us, but we're out here. But appreciate the governor recognizing agriculture and its importance to the Virginia economy. I'm also excited to share that through some efforts of some administrators in the public school system, that all of our public schools are going to have gardens in the coming year. And um, this is something I've been hoping for, for a long time and I'm, I'm excited that it's beginning to happen. And I would also like to thank the Suffolk Clean Community Commission and also Healthy Suffolk for their contributions to supporting these efforts. So looking forward to our, our school kids having a better education about gardening and agriculture and where their food comes from. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson?
Can I like to start off by congratulating all of our seniors in the city? They graduated this past Saturday. I know it's a bunch of happy young people out there, ready to start their lives. Um, we're, we're very proud of our youth in this city and glad they got through this year and going on to a new world. I also participated, a group of city council went and met with the governor in Franklin this past week to talk about high-speed internet in the state. And he assured us there's $51 million to, to be spent over the next two years to try to bring high-speed internet to some of the areas of our, our state that are in such bad need. And, and I view Suffolk as part of that because of our rural areas. So we are very hopeful that we're going to be able to cash in on some of this and make high-speed internet a reality. It won't be tomorrow, but, but I, I, at least we're working on it and it's, hopefully it's coming. Um, in Suffolk, we always think green despite some of the conversations tonight about solar power. We are a green city and we want to stay a green city. On the phone this, on my email this week from, or last week, one week, I don't remember, but a young lady named Gail Nelson sent out a quick little ditty here that I thought was appropriate. She said, "The sky is blue, the grass is green. Litter makes it all unclean. Look around you. If everybody picks up five pieces of litter every day, our world would be a better place." And our city, like all others, we've got our fair share of litter. So let's make it worth, let's pick it up. Let's, everybody make it part of their daily routine. With that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of things. Um, had an opportunity to go to, uh, tour the Amazon infill unit with, uh, a bunch of our council members here. Um, what a great tour. Uh, what a massive, massive structure that is. And it just kind of blows your mind to walk into this building that's like 90 acres, covering 90 acres, four to five-story tall. The massive amount of equipment in there, the robotics, the things that are in that building are just incredible to see. The, the next part will be interesting to see it all come to, come to life, which shouldn't be too far down the line. So I want to thank um, the city manager and your staff for putting that together for us to be able to go out there and Kevin and um, everybody to come, go out and do that tour. That was pretty cool. We'll get to see it probably later this year to um, see it actually be in full-life operation. For those of you that'll be looking for jobs, that speaks as one thing here on the Amazon coming to Suffolk. Um, there'll be an opportunity from what I understand, they'll have a job fair out there coming up pretty close to, you know, probably August timeframe, maybe. I don't quote me on exactly when. Uh, you know, if you need a job, you want a job, you know, go out to the job fair. When you hear it going, it's going to have a lot of great opportunities for people to get work. Um, but be prepared to stand on concrete for however many hours you work. That'll be unpleasant for sure. But go out if you're interested in working, because I'm sure they're going to be hiring a lot of people. I want to thank everybody for coming in, uh, speaking tonight. We had some great folks come up and speak. Uh, for those out in Pewsville, having your open, uh, your little thing on Saturday. Unfortunately, I will be working in Newport News at a COVID-19 site from early morning till about 7:00 that evening, so I won't be able to make it. So I apologize that I won't be able to be there. I'd love to be out, but we will. I'd love to be out, but we will, I'll try to catch you on another time. I want to congratulate you to our new, well, not new, but our permanent City Attorney, Mr. Hutchins. Again, congratulations to you and your family for what you're getting ready to do and what you have been doing. I would like to ask the City Manager if he could take a look at, we are getting ready in the phases of Shoulder Hill Road from 17 construction. Tonight, we just approved the 571 parking space facility over there in North Gate, which leads me to say that part of those trucks are going to come down from 17, cut through to come into the infill, as well as the delivery center out there, the newly-operated one that's going to come online to Chesapeake. With the construction that's going to go on in that roadway, I would like to take and have a look at whether or not we could restrict the truck traffic on that road. That road's not going to bear it. We need to keep pushing the truck traffic down 664 and coming off onto Porson Boulevard, which is more suitable highway to get into those localities. So, I'd like to get something working on that to take a look, because it's going to be a problem. We can address it now, or be looking at what we're going to do to address it coming up. Congratulations to all the awardees. That was awesome. That, that film was awesome. You know, we heard tonight someone make mention, and I'm not going to make light of it, that they were disgusted with our public safety. I find it hard to believe. When you just seen this, two officers swimming next deep in water to save a child out of a car, is that really what we're looking at here, is being disgusted with our public safety? I don't think so. I don't think so. Those are heroes that are out there every day trying to help people. That is not where we're disgusted, Chief Chandler, those guys who are heroic, and I thank them for doing what they do, both fire and your police officers, each and every day. So, I take exception to that comment. The hearing impaired, Diana hit on it just a few minutes ago, public fire is going to get hearing impaired smoke detectors. If you know anybody that's impaired that needs a smoke detector to help them, this is a good opportunity to get with the fire service and get it done, because, believe me, that would be the difference to saving someone's life. So, if you know someone, friend, relative, or anybody that's in the City of Suffolk, get in touch with fire and let's get that impaired smoke detector installed in that home. With that, Mayor, I'd like to say we had a pretty good meeting tonight, and I thank you for everything, thank each council member, and with that, I'll see you on the next meeting.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to congratulate the graduating class of 2021 for a job well done. Have a few things that I would like to, I'll be brief, go through right quick, I'll be brief. On Wednesday, May 29th, I too attended the Governor Northern's broadband legislation signing event in Franklin. This bill will help the City of Suffolk along with other neighboring cities with providing our citizens in the rural communities with making the broadband a reality, hopefully soon. Also, on Monday, May 14th, I attended the tour along with other council members of the Amazon facility in the Suffolk North Gate Industrial Park. Like the other councilmen said, wow, it's a, you know, it's an amazing building, and I was told that the company will be hiring between 15 and 2,000 employees. So, I am looking forward to our next tour once that facility is operational. Also, Mr. Manager, Mr. Jesse Blunt and the Hall Place Community, they have some concerns about the street lighting issues. I actually rode through there. It's the 1 and 200 blocks of Brook Avenue, Kilby Avenue, to 400 and 500 blocks of York Street and South Main Street. The 100, 200, and 300 blocks of York and South Main and Cedar Street have new lightings, but that end of those rows does not have adequate lighting or the new lighting. If you could please get staff to take a look at that, that would be greatly appreciated. My word for this month, again, is accountability. The quality or state of being accountable, an obligation or willingness to accept responsibility or to account for one's actions. With that, I say good evening.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, Mayor. I won't go too deep into the Amazon building either. It was great. It's fantastic what it's going to do for the community and also, I think, for our taxes. I think our taxes are going to be good for that and good employment. They're already hiring people out there now. They got people there that's already getting started, so it's fantastic. And once you see the robotics, I've been in similar buildings and the robotics are just unbelievable. You just can't, can't believe it. City Attorney, thank you. Glad you're with us, onboard now. Congratulations to you. Also, the Valor Awards, I must speak to that. That is just fantastic. We have, and I think Councilman Fawcett said, they're real heroes. This is fire and police and everyone that's involved in that. And I too agree that we have an exceptional police force and fire department, and I think they do a fantastic job, and I support them wholly, fully and wholly for everything they do, and I do appreciate them very much. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Yes. I attend most of all the events. Like to highlight, Amazon is humongous. Can't wait to see it in action with everything going on. That's what I wanted to see next. Also attend the Homegoing Sergeant Rivera, well-attended and good things were said. I just want to mention a former high school player and a pro athlete overseas, Nick Wright, put on the event in the park, Huntersville, Magnolia Park. Good cookout, well-attended, well-attended. And if you know Mr. Wright, he always try to get involved with the community, and he have an organization called Wright Path. So, if you hear anything about there, please try to attend and support him, and even the City of Suffolk, because he is homegrown from the city and trying to do good things in the community. And I also like to grad, to graduate seniors, Old Dominion, I did attend, after the river, mostly every year I do try to make it, and like you said, this was a special one, what they had to go through for their senior year, but it was well-attended. And people of Pewsville, one thing you did say, one of the speakers said, "You don't have to beg. You're not begging. You're just asking to get your dues." And I'm so glad you all come up, speak out, because believe it's not on deaf ear. Just now, you're noticing people, and that's not talking among your civic league, now you're talking to the City of Suffolk, and hopefully things will be moving. Like one council person said that, you know, it might not happen right away, but it's some talk being talked behind closed doors. Like you said, it's a good thing. Keep on coming. Only good things that happen from that. And one of the, one of the speakers also says things I've been preaching about. We can promise you a whole lot and tell you a whole lot, but always say, "It's not on CIP, it's not going to happen." So, CIP come out every year. So, when they're on that CIP, you'll see what's being done for your community. And they write, "Look at the CIP. That's where the money comes in for the budget." Like you said, you can't keep on coming, because I've been hearing you for years, and now I think that not only me and your community, the City of Suffolk hear you. Another thing I wanted to say, it looks so, it feel good when I see not only one village is acting, you all came together. So, Pewsville, you're not by yourself. You got other villages trying to get some of the same things, and you all be stronger. And you got a couple of council people up here who, who are in charge of the village. So, just keep on coming. I think things will work out. Might not be as fast as you want, but like I said, you're not on deaf ear. Things going to happen, and you all have been patient. You have been patient, but sometimes you know God got a way of doing things in the right time. It's time for things to change, and maybe it will. So, just keep on coming. With that, I say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start out by saying congratulations to our four high schools and the graduates of the schools. I think that thanks to the teachers and staff and all, this was a tough year with the pandemic and what they had to go through virtually to get the kids where they were able to graduate. And I think they should be commended for all the teachers and all the staff, what they had to go through this year to make this happen. And listening at the news, there were a lot of kids that had a lot of scholarships that was granted to them, and all the people that was granting those scholarships, I thank them as well. Also, I'd like to recognize the award to police and fire and all that they do each and every day to keep our city safe, and that, I tell you, that was just touching to see those film, what they were responding to, especially the police officer that went in the water to save that child. I mean, it was touching to me. I don't know about others, but that really, really touched my heart to see that, and they was able to save the baby. So, I would just like to say to our public safety people, thank you for all that you do and keep up the good works, and you have my support in whatever you all are doing there and whatever you need to get to accomplish your jobs. Also, I'm glad to see the Cypress Pool is reopening, and a lot of work has been put into that, so I'm hoping that people will take advantage of that with swimming lessons and getting their kids qualified and for life support. We have lost a lot of kids that can't swim, getting in water, so I will miss Mr. Blair Brothers, from Blair Brothers. He used to sponsor about 18 kids every year to give them swimming lessons, because he said he saw so many kids that was being, that's getting drowned by not knowing how to swim. So, I would like to ask the parents and all to make sure they try to get the kids involved with that. Also, while I'm not going back through the list, but I will say the Amazon walkthrough this week was, it was, it was a lot. I had to sort of slow down a little bit going up the stairs. I didn't know I was going to have to walk up all those stairs, and my knees knew it when I got back home. So, it was good. It was a great tour, and it's a lot there to be seen, and it's going to hire a lot of people, so that's, that's a good thing. It's a good taxpayer, so I'm glad to see them coming into our, our city. Also, the boys and girls this year with the city and everything is opening back up. We will have our Oyster Roast. This is our annual fundraiser, and we will be having our Oyster Roast back on this year. Last year, we did it virtually, so this year, we will be back in person doing the, the Oyster Roast. And Sergeant Rivera, he was a dear friend. He was a guy that I always said, when he spoke to you, you know he meant what he was trying to do. With the handshake and the slap on the back, I've never been slapped that hard or handshake that hard, other than with him. So, he was a great person. He was well thought of in the community and in the city, and really, to all the people that got up and spoke about him, it was something that he really had carried himself in a mighty special way that people respected him. My final comment I want to just make about the Pewsville area. I've been involved with Pewsville for 20 years, and I was the first one that was on council then that started funding for the drainage problem. Wayne, I'm sure you probably remember that. And that has been going on for that long a period of time, and it's still going on. One of my concerns is all the houses that's still being built there, and with the drainage problem that you have, and I don't know, and we have talked about this before, but I don't think the city can stop people from building, because it's by right, even though the lots are there and it's on streets that's already have water and sewer on them, so I don't think we can stop them. But I can understand the creation of a problem there as far as adding more to the drainage problem that you have there in that area. So, I don't know what to say, but just say that I don't think anybody that has a deaf ear about the drainage problem, that people are coming here saying, "We all know it's a problem," but it takes time, it takes money, and if you're here with Chuckettup, Pewsville, and I'm sure there's other areas that having some of the same type of drainage problem, and what council has to do is look at all of them. We can't just look at one area and say, but we have to try to prioritize and try to work that out the best we can with the money that we have. So, I just wanted to share that a little bit, that I don't think anyone have a deaf ear to anything that anyone is coming up here saying. But again, it takes money and time, and I've been involved in the Pewsville, I can say over 20 years, so it's nothing new to me. And with that, I would say good evening.
All right, I turned myself on here. Okay, it's been a busy two weeks since our last meeting, I can tell you. Anybody says there's not anything going on, just must be sleeping through it. So, I'm just going to hit on a few, and I'm going to go as expeditiously as possible. The ribbon cutting on Route 58, we already talked about it. It's a huge project, the largest undertaken, I believe, project of that type that the city has undertaken, over $54 million, thereabouts, plus some more. But just a huge project that'll alleviate that traffic, and with all the commercial development we have here in the warehousing, getting everything to the port, it's going to be huge for our city. I'm sure Councilman Johnson will be elated when it's done. I went to a four-kids fundraiser in Chesapeake. They had a huge fundraiser. When I say huge, and everybody knows they have a significant presence in our city now at the corner of Constance Road and Main Street, but I sat there one night and they raised $1.2 million. I've never seen anything like it. I've been a lot, lot of fundraisers, but they got the job done. $1.2 million in about four hours. Of course, they got some folks over there, wrote some big checks, but very impressive. And that, a lot of that money will filter back into Suffolk also. They have a brand-new headquarters over there, $20-something million. They're doing great work, serving a lot of individuals. I attended a mayor's meeting. For those who don't know, there's, there's a regional effort started by Mayor Tuck over in Hampton for a regional approach to addressing some of the increase in violence in Hampton Roads, especially as it relates to youth. And I think the key there when it comes to regional approach, and I see the chief nodding his head, that violence has no boundaries. If you look at a lot of the perpetrators that are, end up in our city, they're not from our city. You know, they're from some of the outlying areas. So, that initiative is still moving forward with deliberate speed, but we'll see where that goes. The Valor Awards, I was, you know, had the honor to be able to attend those and get up on stage with the recipients of those awards. Investigator Parker, Investigator White for an investigative merit award, and that's a long, that's been about 25 years since I've seen Investigator Parker. We chuckled a little bit, because I got a little bit grayer, and he put on a few more pounds since the last time I saw him, but he's a great guy. And the Valor Award being given to Officer Hyman for what he did. I mean, you watch the video, doesn't get much better than that, and then we, we were part of the region. And then we, we were part of the regional Valor Award. So throughout Hampton Roads, South Side, you know, our city was very, very, very well represented, and I thank all of them for the work that they do every day, as long as, as well as their counterparts. Governor Northerm, the broadband initiative signing, I mean, what it is, is, you know, there's a House Bill, House Bill 2304, and there's identical bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 1413, that's going to offer a lot of incentives for companies to come forward and expand broadband capacity to the unserved areas in the Commonwealth. So we've got a lot going on the broadband thing. I know it's a big deal, but you got the governor doing this, we got the regional effort that city manager's been working on for quite some time, that's looking pretty good to get the regional broadband in. And, you know, I know Brandon in the manager's office, we're on top of every opportunity that, that presents itself to try to expand our broadband access. The memorial service for Sergeant Joe Rivera, I've been to, unfortunately, more funerals than I'd like to attend, but that was one of the, you know, greatest tributes I've seen to one individual at one time. But obviously, he's a very honorable man who served the city and our nation with distinction, and it was most deserved. The Amazon tour, put that into perspective, 4 million square feet. The vice mayor was squeaking about his knees being bad. We didn't even get to the third and fourth floor, so I don't know if we had that planned or not. But I mean, that building, I tried to take a picture of it from one end to the other with my, with my phone. You could only get like halfway down there before there, there was no more picture. To put it into perspective, that building in our city of Suffolk is the second largest building in the Commonwealth of Virginia, only exceeded by the Pentagon. So just try to put that into perspective. If you don't do anything else, go to, go out to, to North Gate, drive all the way back and take a look at the building. You know, it's, it's absolutely mind boggling as to how big it is. Attended the National Night Out kickoff, I'm so glad we got a National Night Out. It's just, it's, it's one of my favorite times of the year, especially if it's like, not 95 degrees, but you know, maybe in the upper 80s or low 90s, there've been some warm ones. But, you know, what a way for our citizens to interact with our first responders, and they're not just, you know, we say first responders and we automatically think of the police department, then we think of fire rescue, but we also got the sheriff's department out there. And the sheriff's department is kind of under, you know, under the radar sometimes because they're not who you think of, you know, if, if you have an incident at your house, you have a burglar trying to get into your house, or your garage catches on fire. But the sheriff's department does an outstanding job, as well as the police department and the fire department engaging, engaging our citizens. And that's what it about. We, we talk about violence prevention and all the things that, that make communities a place where you'd want to live and raise your kids, and it's all about safety. If you're not safe, you know, you have no quality of life. And we need to continue as we have been. You know, folks don't realize the National Night Out, we've been in the top five, I think every year we've done it. Diana's got all the trophies in her office, I think, I don't know if she took them home or what it is. But it's just an amazing time, and everybody needs to get out there, and it seems like it gets bigger and better every year, but it's a way to communicate, especially for kids, for kids to be able to interact with law enforcement and for them to understand, you know, they're not their enemy, you know, they're their friends. They're there to help keep them safe. I went to the Community Service Board, had a groundbreaking, Western Tyler Water, the memory care unit on East Washington Street, you know, just another initiative, you know, a lot of what we talk to in violence has to do with mental health. So it's another welcome addition. There's just so much going on in our city, it's almost insane. 2021 graduates, I know Councilman Ward went there, that was an all day affair. Congratulations, I couldn't imagine being a high school senior and graduating this year. I mean, it's, it's one thing about it, you'll never forget when you graduated. When did you graduate? And the coronavirus year, you know, when we did everything virtually, and we didn't do this, we didn't do that. So they'll always have something to talk about. Before I do my quote, I want to congratulate Mr. Hutchins on your permanent appointment as city attorney. Most folks don't realize it because he really doesn't look that old, but he's actually served our city since 2006, and he served our city well. I'm confident that you're going to continue to serve our citizens, but most important, provide us with the exceptional legal advice that you have in the past and the future. So thank you very much for willing to accept that position on a permanent basis. And with that, I will go into, oh, I have one other thing, dang, one other thing I had to do, and I was going to do it when we talked about first responders. I got another little email, chief, from, you know, we, we got, we got, things go both ways sometimes, but this is an email from Mike and Shirley Jackway, I think it is, and I hope I'm not barbecuing the name there. To who it may concern, I just wanted to take a minute of your time and express my appreciation for your department in time when you receive, in a time when you receive complaints and criticism from the public. To make a long story short, I was walking down O'Kelly Drive when one of your officers passed me by on his patrol route. It's reassuring to know that he was taking time out of his day to patrol the area. His simple act of doing his job and protecting the area are a great comfort to my wife and I. Thanks again and have a great week. So while we see all these other things about Valor, this is over and above, but this is what these folks do every day, and I think more of your citizens appreciate it than you realize, because I talked to a lot of folks, and they just, they just sent an email because it made them feel safe, and that's what we just talked about. So for that, I'll go into quote of the night, and that is from Leo Biscalia, who I think is a pretty emotional guy, but anyhow. Leo Biscalia, "Too often we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around." And with that, I will, if there is no further business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. We have Councilman Williams.
So move.
With a motion, and Councilman Fawcett with a second. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Everybody good? As Harold Falk used to say at the EDA meetings, are all minds clear? Prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting is adjourned.